Okay, we're gonna do this as soon as we've got everybody back. In the one, two, three, four. Look at the ladies. Let's have applause for the ladies.[14.13][14.13](APPLAUSE). Go ladies. All right, we're moving right along, everyone. Oh, but there's a buzzing. What's that? Do you hear that? Okay, I think we're on Agenda Item 9. Okay, "Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the agenda for action. The amount of time any single speaker is allowed may be limited. All comments made will be cross-reference to those specific items. If anyone submitted a speaker card or who wishes to speak under this portion of the agenda, please come to the podium, state your name for the record. This is your opportunity to address the council, but the council is not able to respond or engage in dialogue." So we'll set the time at 1:00. Madam Clerk, please. And please, if you would like to make comment on Agenda Items. Okay, hearing and seeing none, we'll move on to Agenda Item 10. Business Items, Possible Action. Any items from the 10:00 AM session that the council staff and/or applicant wish to be stricken, table, withdrawn, or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. Mayor Pro Tem.
Madam Mayor, the follow-on items have been requested to be held in abeyance, table, withdrawn, or stricken. Item number 56, a report from our fabulous city manager, Scott D. Adams, on emerging issues. All words, it was stricken, requested by the staff, and that will be my motion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. There's a motion to strike Agenda Item 56. Please vote, and please post.[110.03][110.03](APPLAUSE). Is it working for you? Okay, orally, if you can.
Aye.
And it's an aye. Okay, motion carries. Thank you very much. We'll move on to Agenda Item 11.[136.06][136.06](pause). Did you glue these together? Goodness, there we are. For possible action to approve the final minutes by reference of the August 7, 2019 City Council Meeting. Mayor Pro Tem, may I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the minutes of the August 7, 2019 City Council Meeting.
Thank you. There's a motion. Please vote. Mine says failed. The Earth says failed. They all say failed. So let's have an oral on the minutes, please. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, unanimous. We'll move on to Agenda Item 12. Items number 12 through 54 on the consent agenda are considered to be routine or recommended for approval by the department and may be enacted in one motion. I understand we're pulling item 54 to be heard after consent so staff can make some comments for the record. We'll also be voting on 12 through 53 first. Also, Councilwoman Seaman, you had a comment you wish to make on Agenda Item 12, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As this dispute continues to drag on, consuming ever more tax dollars, my hope and desire remains, as I expressed during this past campaign, for both sides of the dispute, the property owner and the surrounding homeowners, to come together, compromise, and reach a resolution that works for all parties. I will do everything in my power as the representative of everyone in Ward 2 to help achieve such an outcome. In the meantime, I must also do what is best to defend the citizens of Las Vegas and the actions taken by the City Council and city staff. Therefore, I will support the additional funding request for our outside legal counsel.
Thank you very much. Please note that the record should reflect my abstention on items 25 through 27 because they pertain to medical marijuana-related business, one of my sons involved in that industry. I'll be voting on all other items. Are there any other items council wishes to bring forward or trail at this point? Okay, hearing none. Mayor Pro Tem, may I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move to approve consent items number 12 through 53.
Thank you. There's a motion. Please vote.
We need you to take an oral vote, Mayor.
Pardon?
An oral vote?
Again, okay, oral vote. Please, all signify by aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? No, that was unanimous. And now, if we could, Agenda Item Resolution on number 54, R. 412019, Possible Action to Approve a Resolution Notice Regarding the Granting of Telecommunications Service Franchise to Crown Castle Fiber LLC, Setting the Purpose, Character, Term, and Conditions of the Proposed Franchise, and Setting a Public Hearing on the Advisibility of Granting the Proposed Franchise. This is in reference to all wards. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Mayor, Council. For the record, my name is Gina Bishop. I'm the Franchise Officer for the city, and I have with me today Tanya Freezy. She is the Network Real Estate Manager with Crown Castle. The item before you is a resolution and notice to set a public hearing on the advisability of granting a telecommunications franchise to Crown Castle Fiber LLC. The franchise agreement is non-exclusive. It is short-term, expiring on August 1, 2021, and there is no option to renew this agreement. The terms and conditions of this particular agreement are consistent with those of our seven other telecommunications franchise agreements, and they are compliant with federal telecommunications laws requiring local governments to provide equal access to the public right-of-way.
Would you repeat that statement, please?
The last part?
The last one about the federal compliance.
And the agreement is compliant with federal telecommunications laws requiring local governments to provide equal access to the public right-of-way.
Thank you.
If granted, this franchise would allow Crown Castle to expand its network within the city of Las Vegas and pay the city a 5% franchise fee on its gross revenues for the use of the city's right-of-way. And with that, I'll turn it over to Tanya Freezy to talk a little bit about Crown Castle, and then we'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Welcome to Las Vegas.
Good morning, Mayor Goodwin, Mayor Pro Tem, and members of the council. Tanya Freezy with Crown Castle. By way of background, Crown Castle is the nation's largest shared wireless infrastructure provider. We have 40,000 traditional cell towers across the U.S., along with 65,000 small wireless facilities. In addition to that infrastructure, we have 65,000 route miles of fiber either in construction or deployed throughout the country. We are also a Nevada public utility company, telecommunications provider in the state. We have an existing wireless use agreement that has allowed us to deploy small wireless facilities and fiber optic cable in the city's right-of-way over the last 10-plus years. This new fiber franchise will allow Crown Castle to deploy additional fiber optic cable that will support small wireless facilities. However, these are facilities that are not installed and operated by Crown Castle. You know, this telecommunications infrastructure is no longer a convenience, it's a necessity. In addition to supporting the city of Las Vegas' smart city goals, this infrastructure does improve the safety, reliability, and network connectivity for all those who live, work, and visit Las Vegas, and available to answer any questions you might have about Crown Castle or the fiber franchise. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions, comments from council? What I'm going to do is answer another motion, even though the motion before was for 12 through 54, which we unanimously... I did say 54, but I think it's all right. We're gonna do it again, 54. So both ways it works. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve consent items number 12 through 54.
No, just 54, because she's absolutely right. Stand corrected, I did read 12 through 53 first, and then Councilwoman made hers, but I think I said 54. But anyway, move on 54.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve Agenda Item number 54.
Thank you very much. Please vote, and please post.[577.01][577.01](APPLAUSE). And that motion unanimously carries. Thank you very much for coming, and Ms. Bishop, thank you so much. Thank you. Okay, we move on to Agenda Item 55, Administrative Report from Jeremy Aguero, Applied Analysis Regarding the Cost of Homelessness and Impact in Southern Nevada. Discussion for Possible Action on Accepting the Report and Giving Direction to Our Staff. This is in reference to all wards. And hello, morning.
Good morning, Mayor, members of the council. Lisa Morris Hibler, Chief Community Services Officer. Today's presentation by Jeremy Aguero with Applied Analysis provides a high-level information on the cost of homelessness and the impact in southern Nevada. Applied Analysis was retained as part of the updating of the Homeless Services Strategy and the Affordable Housing Plan facilitated by the Office of Community Services. As you can see from this illustration... As you can see from this illustration, the city's homeless strategy related to housing incorporates a continuum of interventions, from street homelessness to self-sufficiency. And while over the past few years our focus has been on outreach and diversion through the moor teams, the courtyard, and shelter services, we certainly recognize the need for transitional housing, supportive housing, and affordable housing. We also understand the significant need to collaborate on services related to mental health, substance abuse, and employment. This report helps to quantify the current and future housing needs and the estimated cost of providing services to those that are or are likely to become homeless. At this time, I'd like to turn the microphone over to Jeremy Aguero.
Thank you very much, and we welcome Mr. Aguero back. He's native-born, and he's brilliant, and he's done more work in this state in more analysis of more projects than I can possibly even possibly repeat. So we thank you, and thank you for this one as well.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor, for that very kind introduction. I appreciate the opportunity to be here today, and I'm certainly thankful to staff for all their effort in helping us get to this point. Mayor, members of the city council, we went through a relatively significant analysis. I've been asked just to sort of hit on a few of the highlights here at your council meeting today. In the analysis itself, there are five primary components to it. The first is quantifying those that are impacted, the sources of homelessness, evaluating the cost of homelessness, projecting the future costs, and then the implications associated with homelessness. This, again, as Dr. Morris Hibler indicated, the end goal is to try and assess what the actual cost is that the city is facing relative to what is a substantial challenge around the United States, but most certainly here in southern Nevada. With regard to those that are impacted, there's the annual homeless population estimate, according to Clark County, that has been actually decreasing for some time. I will certainly readily admit, from an analyst's perspective, counting the number of homeless folks can be extremely difficult to do. There are a number of different estimates that are out there, but this is the one that's existed for some period of time, and so we've utilized it here in this analysis. Again, I think when we see neighborhoods and we see things that are going on with differing opinions in terms of subjective viewpoints, and objective viewpoints can be different. But for purposes of our analysis here, the census estimates have been declining over time. What we know is that homelessness tends to be highly related to how the economy is performing, although it's not a one-to-one relationship by any means. The black line here represents the share of homelessness in terms of the population, the percentage of the population that we classify as homeless, where the lighter blue line there represents the unemployment rate. Again, a relatively simplistic way of looking at the relationship between homelessness and unemployment, but you see that as we have gone from having the highest unemployment rate or among the highest unemployment rates in the United States to having an unemployment rate that would reflect almost full employment, those numbers have declined. Certainly wouldn't want to leave you with the impression that everyone that needs a job has a job, but we've certainly improved in this regard significantly. The national comparisons continue to be somewhat daunting for us. Again, respecting that different data sources differ, Nevada continues to have among the highest rates of homelessness in the United States in terms of where we rank. Those darker colors there represent greater rates of homelessness, and you can see that Nevada overall is relatively high. Unfortunately, there's not a similar analysis that breaks it down by individual metropolitan area, but it does indicate, you know, where we are relative to that. So if that's the sort of the folks that are in need, if you will, or the number of homeless that are out there for purposes of our calculation, it also is important to think about the sources of homelessness. And in looking at that, I've got a chart that shows everything from lack of affordable housing to mental health to substance issues and those type of things. I think it's important to point out that homelessness is a symptom, not a virus, right? It is the result of a number of things that are happening with our community overall. If we look at poverty, which is clearly a driving force, our poverty rate in Clark County is just slightly higher than the United States and Nevada as a whole. However, our poverty rate for folks under the age of 18 is a little bit more significantly higher... A little bit more significantly, that didn't quite make sense, Mayor, forgive me, but is higher than what we'd like to see and is more significant in that regard overall. We know that the cost of housing in our community has escalated tremendously over the past few years. This is the Housing Opportunity Index, which is a relatively simple way of thinking about the percentage of people living in our community that can afford a median-priced home. Back in 2012, when housing prices dipped substantially, that was almost 90% of the people that live in our community. Today, it's 52%, 53% of our population, and has been declining relatively consistently over the past five years. In addition to that, we've also seen that the cost of rent has been escalating, in some ways, more recently escalating even faster than the rate of housing prices, particularly over the past 12 months, pricing people out of the rental market, and again, making it more difficult to have access. And more challenging than that, perhaps, is that our inventory of affordable housing, and particularly affordable housing for those living at... Those that are at extremely low income levels or extremely low-income renter households being actually the lowest in the entire United States, at about 15 units available for every 100 households that are in need. Evaluating the cost of homelessness is taking those supply-side functions and the issues that we think are leading to homelessness or we know are leading to homelessness, and then evaluating the cost. There are also many of these. I realize these are well-known to the city council, but the cost of jails and social services and shelters and hospitals all are demanded by folks that are near to become homeless or have actually become homeless overall. We went out and looked at a number of jurisdictions that have done exhaustive studies, many of them, in terms of what their cost of homelessness have been. Some of those were extremely detailed, some of them were sort of cursory in nature, but when we look at all of those studies over the past decade or so, what we found is that the average cost of homelessness is about $25,500 per person who is homeless every year. In addition to that, the median there, the center value, is a little bit higher, about $26,000 overall. When we think about both of these, we think about, okay, how many homeless people are there that are in need, and how many, and what is the cost? This gives us the framework to be able to estimate what the projected cost of homelessness is. And we did that based on a range of potential outcomes. The blue represents the history, the red represents a high scenario for homelessness, the green represents a low scenario for homelessness, and the blue bars represent a projection based on where we think it's going to play out as the economy settles back into a more normal trend, and we continue to see changes in that regard, respecting the fact that it's likely to be somewhere between those high and low parameters overall. When we look at the cost per person, per homeless person, we also escalate that. As this council knows extremely well, the cost of providing services is not going down, the cost of providing services is going up. So we have to combine both of those to get a number of scenarios. If we look at the low-population scenario and the low-cost scenario, essentially, the best-case outcome, believe it's currently costing the city about $234 million a year to provide services for the homeless population. At the high end of that, the high estimate and the high estimate in terms of cost, or the high estimate in terms of population and the high estimate of cost, it's about $500 million, roughly half a billion dollars every year. The mid-case scenario between those is about $370 million a year. The problem is, and the difficulty of our analysis, is we think the problem is likely to continue to get worse. The cost of housing is becoming more challenging, our population continues to grow, and the demand for services continue to increase. Looking 20 years out, the mid-case scenario puts the annual cost of homelessness to the community at about $1.1 billion per year, or the high and the low estimate, somewhere between half a billion and $2.2 billion each year to provide those services. We did our best to count everything that we can relative to homelessness, but we are also mindful that there are qualitative elements associated with homelessness, business just choosing not to move to southern Nevada, or choosing not to relocate to downtown Las Vegas as a result. The visual aspects, the real, the human challenges associated with homelessness have become increasingly more apparent. Obviously, the city has undertaken a number of initiatives, including the Courtyard Resource Center, to try and get services to those who need them most, but we are also mindful of the complexity of this particular problem, where sometimes the service matrix that's needed is very difficult when someone's dealing with mental illness challenges or substance abuse issues. It's not simply as easy as some folks, not the city council, but others would tend to believe of just finding someone a job or putting them in an apartment. It's much more complicated than that. Impressive in terms of the other jurisdiction that we looked at is exactly what Dr. Hibler talked about a moment ago, and that is a continuum of interventions, seeking not only to help folks that have become homeless, but trying to prevent homelessness in the first place, which is obviously the most cost-effective strategy that the city can have. All of that having been said, the conclusions, I believe, are relatively unambiguous. The cost of homelessness is significant, the sources of homelessness are challenging and complex to address, and unfortunately, we believe that these costs are likely to continue to escalate into the foreseeable future. With that, Madam Mayor, City Council, again, thank you very much for the opportunity to be here, and I'm happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Thank you. I mean, you certainly did a magnificent job of conveying all that information in a very brief but running manner, and we thank you very much.
Thank you.
It is an enormous issue and challenge for the city, as you well know, and all southern Nevada, and in fact, across this country. Every U.S. Conference of Mayors that I attend, that's the first thing beyond safety that is on the mouth of every mayor, is how do we do it? Where is it successful, and the cost to our city, and where we're going to get the funds to do it? So comments, questions from council? Certainly, we'll start with you, Councilman Creer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you. Thank you, Mr. Aguero, for the very precise analysis of our homelessness situation. Just want to state that, obviously, in my ward of Ward 5, these numbers are elevated tremendously, and as we move forward to try to figure out constructive and productive and efficient ways of dealing with the homeless population, we're finding that it's going to take more of a regional approach as well to this, and that's something that I think needs to really be discussed about how we, as this city, which I believe has taken a very, very strong lead in mitigating homelessness, needs to work with the county, North Las Vegas, Henderson, as well as the city of Las Vegas. And I hope that if there's anyone listening, that they are willing participants, because sometimes it seems to be butting heads. And I don't know if you had any comments regarding that in terms of how best we can collaborate better?
Mayor, with your permission?
Certainly.
Councilman, I don't know that I have a whole lot of comments, other than to completely agree with exactly the points that you just made. I mean, you and I have had the conversation before. When the economy went down, the folks that had the least to lose were the ones that were impacted first and often most. And as our economy has recovered, I mean, we look around today, we're leading the nation in almost every category, population growth, income growth, jobs being created, but that shouldn't be confused with the fact that that means prosperity for all in our community. Obviously, some of the efforts that you've done, your staff has done, to raise awareness and develop programs to try and connect folks with jobs and with services, I think have been, at least based on my research, have been as strong as any that we've seen in going through this exercise, and I applaud your effort, and I hope that that continues. The only other piece that I would offer is I think that the community is listening. I think that they're starting to hear you. Not that that says really anything germane with this specific discussion, but we did do a survey recently with a Moonridge group relative to corporate philanthropy, and it struck me last year that we saw a strong increase in the category that includes hunger and homelessness in terms of where corporate funders were focusing their time and attention. As a matter of fact, in comparison with national averages, that increased between 2017 and 2018. It doubled in terms of the share of those corporate dollars that were going to those type of things, and I think that has a lot to do with what your staff, this city council, and other elected officials have been doing to raise awareness about this very serious problem.
Thank you. And I would add, of course, the numbers were greatly increased, because we led the nation in foreclosures back in 2009, 10, and there. And that certainly created an additional problem for our homeless involved, social services and everything else. One of the things why the collaboration and sharing information, but attending these and speaking with mayors across the country with regularity, while there's an awareness, it's the model, and I think that's what the city's been concentrating on, is creating the model that can be replicated in other parts of Clark County, and then perhaps in a greater sense. But I know this courtyard and the work that's been done so ably by our staff and our private partners, as well as social services, it is trying to hold on to that and build it piece by piece, taking from best examples around the country that we can find, and if we can hold on to this model and create it, then it can be replicated. But the bigger the problem, you can't solve everything all at once. Conversation needs to be there, communication, open communication, and we do welcome ideas, and certainly our social innovation, and that's what we're all about. So I don't know if, before I turn it down, I know certainly, Councilman, go, Councilman Knutson, and then you can answer all the questions all at once.
All right, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Aguero, for the report. I've worked in the field around homelessness for many years now, and so it's a familiar conversation for me, but new to the city council and the elected role, I would ask for guidance from Ms. Morris Hibler and Ms. Thomas Gibson, and even you, Mr. Aguero. What do you think we do with this information as a board? What are next steps for us? Given the comments from Councilman Creer, which I appreciate and agree with 100%, what are your recommendations for next steps as for policymakers?
Kathy Thomas Gibson, Director for the Office of Community Services. In fact, Councilman, the reason that we commissioned this study is because we are in the process of updating our homeless services strategy and our affordable housing strategy, both of which we intend to bring to the council with some options, so that you can make some policy decisions. We are at a tipping point in terms of the level of investment that would be necessary to fully engage along that entire continuum of interventions, so the council has invested quite heavily up to this point at what I call the front end with things like street-based outreach, crisis housing, the courtyard. We support the entire shelter system through an inter-local process that is regional to one of Councilman Creer's concerns about our regional approach. We are very engaged. And so now the question really will be, where do we want to go in terms of that continuum of interventions, recognizing that it exists in what we call the intervention environment, mental health systems, employment, drug services? So it is our intention to come back with a full presentation specifically around those issues, because I think there are a number of options, and you all have an opportunity to give full consideration to a number of approaches and strategies.
Mayor, through you, I also like to say, going back to Councilman Creer's question and also to your question, Councilman Knutson.
And for the record, your name.
Oh, for the record, thank you, Mayor, Lisa Morris Hibler.
Thank you.
You know, I feel like we have a really good opportunity right now to really work collaboratively with the county. Under the leadership of city manager Scott Adams, you know, we've already teed up some conversations about what we can do as a region. We have AB 73 that's going to start in October, and that is a regional approach to putting together the homeless strategies. And honestly, if you look at what we've been doing, as I said, there's been a real focus on the outreach and the diversion, trying to get people off the streets, and the county has been focused in on a lot of the longer-term approaches, including the affordable housing. So if you think about it, we pretty much have the two ends of the continuum. What we have to do is then try to bridge that middle, and I think that there's definitely an opportunity with that. Also, with the AB 309 funding that was recently passed by the county, there may be potentially additional funding for those housing. So what I would say to you and to the board in terms of, you know, continue to give us your input and your feedback. As Kathy said, we will bring back some strategies to you. We've been working with the inter- We've been working with an interdepartmental team, and we're going to continue to work with our community partners. This is something that takes everybody, all hands on deck, in order for us to even manage the issue at hand, and that's what we look forward to working on.
Thank you. And Councilwoman, was there anything you wish to add there? Thank you.
I just wanted to thank Mr. Aguero for his very enlightening presentation. What struck me particularly, that I didn't really think about much, is the missing middle. How middle classes are, our middle class currently is struggling more than ever to make ends meet, because the cost of living is just exponentially rising, the affordability of renting a place or even affording a home is almost at a cost and out of reach. And so, you know, automatically, you think about low-income folks and how folks making the minimum wage don't have enough, but usually, they qualified for resources. But the middle class usually don't qualify for a substantial amount of wraparound services, and it just is scary to think that if we are going to face a recession, how many people could potentially be hit in an unfavorable way and lose where they're living, because I know that sometimes I'm living paycheck to paycheck. So it is just concerning in that regard, and it's good to shed light that it's not just our low-income communities or our low-income folks, but it's also a substantial amount of our middle class that could be negatively impacted. So I wanted to ask if there were any best practices that you found are working well to make sure that there is attainable housing for everybody?
Mayor, with your permission, for the record, Jeremy Aguero. The answer to your question is yes, there are some best practices around the United States that are doing that. The legislature, number one, Councilwoman, I think your assessment is absolutely right. The problem is on both sides of the equation. If the economy continues to do well and housing prices continue to escalate, we price more working families out of the housing market, right? If the economy turns down, we have all kinds of families that are kind of one paycheck away from having a real challenge, and that becomes a problem. And so the squeeze on us is particularly problematic. In terms of best practices around the United States, yes, there are some. I mean, obviously, the Nevada State Legislature took up this issue and identified some degree of funding to try and build some more affordable housing. City councils across the United States have taken on this question of housing affordability and workforce housing and all those type of things. Probably a longer discussion than for here, and I'd happy to share with you whatever it is that I know. But I think maybe this goes to the councilman's question a moment ago, and that is, hey, what are these broader best practices to deal with all of that? And to your question as well is, I think it's almost every decision that the city council makes is going to affect that. When you're talking about public safety, you're talking about homelessness. When you're talking about housing and making zoning decisions, you're talking about jobs being created and houses being built, and you're talking about that access to housing. Again, homelessness is not a virus. It's the symptom of the outcome of all of these for exactly the reason you just said.
Thank you, Mr. Aguero, and I look forward to the work of AB 73 starting. I think that those conversations are needed, and I hope that the city can be a great partner in collaborating with other entities that do the work in this space, that we can come together and create a plan that moves us forward.
Thank you. We really appreciate this report and the manner in which you've always continued to conduct yourself in getting information clearly communicated and dealing with the data that we know is out there. One of the issues that I think is paramount at the very top of all of this, we need a legislature that meets every year, not every year, because as the laws and the rules and the suggestions and communications come out, we have a whole part of our homeless population with mental challenges that are not being addressed. There's so many parts to the group that make up the homelessness, but the country has been remiss since the days of trying to help those who can be helped to become a part of society again, but our homeless population and part of the safety and security of the community. This area needs to be addressed most significantly, and it starts with our lawmaking body, which is only one of four states in the entire country that doesn't meet annually. And we need to move that forward to help with this, so we can get in front of the lawmaking bodies and get funding and everything else. So at this point, if there are no more questions or comments, I can't thank you enough, and I would ask Mayor Protem to move to accept the report.
Thank you, Madam.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to accept this report.
Do we do this regularly?
Yes.
Okay, please vote and please post. And that motion carries unanimously, and thank you, our team, and again, thank you, Mr. Aguero. It's just always such a pleasure to hear from you regardless of your report, because you just do such a great job. So number 56 has been stricken, so we're on to number, Agenda Item 57, Report from Tim Hacker, Chief Public Safety Services Officers on Status Programs and Projects of the City Public Safety Departments. Morning.
Morning, Mayor, City Council. I am Tim Hacker. I'm your Chief Public Safety Services Officer, and I have the pleasure of supporting your Department of Public Safety, Las Vegas Fire and Rescue, our municipal courts, and our emergency management team. So today, I'm here to provide you an update on the services provided by these departments and the impacts the departments have on your Las Vegas community. Well, I'll start with, we always like to talk about numbers, and there are some really big numbers that we provide to support our public safety functions. We're over 70% of your general fund, and as far as what looks like a small number, our emergency management's actually close to $1 million, but they're predominantly funded through grants and other funding sources other than your general fund. So you developed a strategic plan a few years back, that was based on community input and support, and so you can see that public safety was highlighted in that plan and to become the safest and high-profile city in America. What that means when you start to boil it down is, how do we deliver our public safety services? Are we efficient? Are we effective? How are our residents and our visitors satisfied with those public services? And then, of course, safety at our City of Las Vegas facilities that are spread throughout our community. And then, per these priorities, I mean, the following slides are really to present a deeper dive into how the department goals are set and the accomplishments that they've attained. So public safety, which is headed by Chief Michelle Freeman and her executive team, has very, you know, three very distinct divisions. We have our detention services, we have our field services, our marshals who are outdoing patrol, and then the support services that support them as well. So there's 461 budgeted positions in that department.
Excuse me, could we go back to that?
Absolutely.
With our detention, 275 employees on an average, what is the population in the detention center? So how many employees per?
Yeah, I don't know if I can give you the breakdown per employee, because it's not just CEOs, there's other elements of that. But we are, actually, there's a slide that's going to talk a little bit about our average population. It's nearly 900, so we'll see that in a minute, but great question.
900?
Yeah, roughly.
Wow, thank you.
So this gives you an idea of how our Department of Public Safety is kind of spread. I highlighted the MOR teams, because, you know, following Jeremy's presentation and discussions of what we're dealing, or dealing with as far as our unhomed or homeless population, you know, our MOR teams is something that we stood up a few years back. We're working with Metro, as well as deploying our own Department of Public Safety employees in those teams, so I think it's worthwhile to show that. And that is a multi-agency collaborative effort. When we talk about regionalism, you know, our public safety groups definitely are regionally oriented. So what are we seeing as far as statistics? We're definitely seeing an increase, 12% from fiscal year 18 to 19, in the number of calls for service. You, a few years back, Mayor and Council approved augmenting and adding marshals to, and we are continuing to hire those and try to stay ahead of the retirements that we're experiencing. So calls of service have definitely increased. You know, the good news is, the goal of trying to respond to a call within 10 minutes is being achieved on a regular basis. And in fact, from 18 fiscal year, between fiscal year 18 and 19, we saw a 2% decline as far as the response time, or that's actually an improvement. So if we declined, we actually improved in that regard. So that kind of gives you an idea of what our, excuse me, our call volumes are. Our bookings, Mayor, you asked about annual bookings at the detention center, and our averages there, I just want to touch upon that real quick. You know, we're almost 34,000 in annual bookings. Our detention population's about 860, between 860 and 900, as I mentioned before. And that gives you a breakdown between Las Vegas and then we do house North Las Vegas at this time. So animal control is another element of the services provided by Department of Public Safety, and as we all know, there's nothing more sensitive to people outside of their children, it's probably their pets. And so we take this very seriously. There is a high number in call for services. The approach to providing service within 30 minutes is definitely being obtained. We're almost, you know, at 20 minutes, a little below 20 minutes in responding to that. But one thing you'll hear from people that encounter our animal services is normally how caring our employees are, our staff is, and how much counseling and education that you try to provide when they're interacting with their customers. Because again, it's very sensitive issues when you're dealing with people's pets. So our fiscal year 20 goals and key indicators are outlined here. You know, really, they're in direct alignment, not only with your priorities, but with our citizens' engagement survey that we do, and we try to seek their feedback as well. And the department seeks opportunities to provide training to citizens through different programs. We increase our situational awareness and our education of our own employees. You know, when you talk about violence in the workplace and things like that, we are in, very much in focus in how do we train our employees and try to avoid those types of situations. We've increased our presence in patrol of our City of Las Vegas properties. That was a priority that was set a few years back when you augmented our detachment of marshals and an increase of marshals, and here in City Hall, we do enjoy a greater presence than we were able to enjoy in the past. And then we continue to train and coordinate with regional agencies. And again, that comes up with City Council from time to time, how much are we in tune with our regional partners? And we are greatly in tune with them and do a lot of joint training. Fire and Rescue, headed by Chief McDonald and his executive team, is a very busy, very busy department. And, you know, we call them Fire and Rescue. I don't know, at some point, we're going to have to change it. It's emergency medicine predominantly is what they do, and you'll learn more about that as we go through there. But we have 170 firefighters deployed in 21 different stations, total staffing, you know, and that's on-duty staffing, excuse me. Total contingency is well over 700 firefighters and paramedics that are on duty. And one thing that doesn't get enough attention is our inspections and our plan review and whatnot, and how important that is to reducing the risk of fire and other incidences. You can do that if you appropriately plan upfront and, of course, inspect properties and keep them up to date. So this illustration that shows you the deployment of our stations and our call volume, I mean, that's a staggering number of calls, and you can see emergency medical is predominantly what we're responding to in our community. Through that dispatch center, that's a joint dispatch center, so again, emphasizing our regionalization, but we have over, almost 40% of the calls are based in the City of Las Vegas out of that. And we've had some successes in how we deliver medical services in our Houston, Uston, I'm probably going to mispronounce that, cardiac survival rate. It's a goal of ours, is that when we get out there and we have to react to a medical episode, what's the survival rate? We're over 33% survival rate, and that's well above the national average. So they're doing some great, great work there. But mobile integrated healthcare is really where we're going to. When we're providing medical services in our, in an ever-changing landscape and definitely partnering with other agencies and the hospitals and other entities out there, it's important to understand how this is provided and what we're doing as a department to try to stay ahead of that and really anticipate what's around the corner. And you'll be learning or hearing more about that as we look at how we are providing emergency medical going forward. So the key goals and key indicators are shown on this slide, and again, our number one priority is to adequately staff, and that's been a real challenge. We get, we get all kinds, we get hundreds of applicants every time we run an academy, and we run two academies a year, but to get to the type of personnel that best suits our community's needs, it's difficult. And we're, of course, challenged with the fact that we're looking at the same pool of applicants that Clark County is, North Las Vegas and Henderson is as well. And so, but we think we do a good job of doing that and selecting the right candidates and providing the right services that we need. The residential sprinkler ordinance, you adopted that a while back, and there's already, from what I've been told, over 7,000 units already constructed that have that feature in them. And so again, that's again, staying ahead of the curve, looking down the horizon and making sure that we're enacting ordinances and providing services that will save lives and keep our community safe. So our municipal court, we had, two of our judges were visiting us this morning, but we have six courts. Dana Lovak is our court administrator, and as you can see, they're a very busy court. You're, through the good graces of the city council, you have a new building that's going up across the street. Hopefully, you've been in your offices and heard that jackhammering like I have, as they hit a little bit of cleechy, but it's still, it's still moving ahead. In addition to the specialty courts that we've enjoyed over the last so many years, there's a fresh start program that has been started, and that's kind of dealing with our homeless and indigent populations and trying to address those issues that were just discussed with Mr. Aguero and dealing with the homeless. And that's, we're trying to divert people, not going into detention, we're trying to divert them away from detention. And so there's, it's a, we're dipping our toe into it, so there's only been 65 individuals that have gone through it, and it's had some good success, and we look to expand that service. Getting more information on how our alternative courts and alternative sentencing programs has been working in, between fiscal year 13 and 19, we've had 417 graduates. It doesn't seem like a huge number, but every one of those individuals has been on a path of success when they get through these court systems. And, you know, we've seen, we've seen a good success rate of over 40%, and anybody that's gone through those courts has, again, they've been put on, or given an opportunity to be put on a path of success. So the key goals and indicators here is basically customer service. If we have a new case management system that we're going to employ is going to help with our customer service, you know, we're trying to decrease the custodial status of those individuals, which is in response to the Nevada State Legislature, really, is what, we don't want to detain them, we don't want to put them in our detention center, we want to find other ways to work in the court system to apply justice, but yet not to, you know, have that dramatic effect on an individual's life. Also have the opportunity to support emergency management. Carolyn Levering and her team, small but mighty team. There are only six individuals, but they are tasked with really coordinating with the region and preparing us for the case of when an emergency occurs. We have the plans in place, and we have the infrastructure in place. And so I think most of you have taken part in different trainings. There is definitely going to be an upcoming training that's, that we're going to tie into the state of Nevada, as it's the Silver Crucible, and that's going to test our communications and resource requests between the city, county, and the state. So this is again, showing that we work with federal agencies. We also provide a lot of educational opportunities for our community, and we just want to, you know, their entire goal is not only to have us prepared, but to educate the community and make sure that they're prepared as well, the greater community. One of the things that they're most proud of is that the Community Emergency Response Team, the CERT program, annually, they have trained nearly 800 civilians a year for the, you know, for the past years, and going forward, they hope to expand that as well. So the key goals, again, pulling from what our community is telling us, pulling from your guidance, we establish goals that are allowing us to reach out to the community to train them, to prepare ourselves. And as you can see at the bottom, this has been updated even, includes Storm Area 51. This weekend is going to be a busy weekend. We not only have Life is Beautiful, there's this potential for our neighboring counties to be overrun with individuals. In Lincoln County, literally 5,000 residents, they have 12 full-time police officers, so they are leaning, they're looking towards Clark County, which includes us, of course, in the planning and preparation for that event, if it occurs. And who are they going to call? They're going to call, they're going to call us. And so that's how on top of things our emergency management team is. So with that, if there's any questions, I appreciate the opportunity to brag a little bit about our public safety services, and we do appreciate the Mayor and City Council's continued support.
Thank you, Mr. Hacker. We are so proud of our entire team and just appreciate their work every day and just wish we had more funds. we had more funds available to increase the numbers of people that you need in all departments. But we're just really grateful for each of them all the time, every day consistently. So thank you for the report. Comments, questions? Yes, Councilman Anthony, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of comments. First of all, don't forget to mention your Department of Public Safety is going through accreditation.
Yes.
So that is a, that's a huge deal. It's very difficult to get accredited, and you have to put a lot of effort into it. So I commend you and Chief Freeman for going through the process of coming accredited. I'm on the board for Calea, so I'm looking forward to handing your award, your first award in a year or so. So just make sure you put that slide in there.
Absolutely.
That's a big deal.
Yeah, thank you for mentioning.
The second thing is recruiting. I mean, recruiting is, especially today with unemployment so low, recruiting is tough for police, fire, everybody, especially public safety. But the one thing I hope you don't consider or even do is lowering your standards. Don't do that.
No.
Because you start hiring knuckleheads and the department goes down. We have to have high-caliber people like we have today, so please don't do that.
No, absolutely, absolutely wouldn't do that. That's a good, that's a good point through the mayor is, we definitely have high standards. We expect high standards as our, we're delivering services day in and day out, because on the other side is all that liability that can be created if we don't hire the right people. So I appreciate that comment.
Glad to hear that. And then the third, just a third comment, is I know the Nevada Supreme Court came down with a pretty big decision for municipal court. They have to have jury trials for domestic violence cases. So I'm sure you're having those discussions right now. That's kind of a big deal to have jury trials for misdemeanor cases. So I'm looking forward to hearing how you guys are gonna handle that, so.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. We, Judge Leon, Chief Judge Leon, and the judges are meeting with our prosecuting team. So we hope to be able to brief you, if not next week, within the coming weeks on the impact of that.
Great, thank you.
And fortunately, her honor Leon was foreseeing enough and a visionary to make sure that we were ready for jury trials in our new building, that we don't have to pause and go back and put in a change order. But that's wonderful. So thank you, thank you. This is a report only, so we don't need a motion, but thank you, and we look forward to every day with you. Thank you, Mr. Hacker.
Appreciate your support, thank you.
Could you jump in for a moment, Brad Jerwick of the City Attorney's Office? We think we've resolved the problem with the jury trials. We've met with the DA's office and all the other municipalities, including Reno, and we are gonna tee up on October 2nd the introduction of a new bill to make domestic violence a local crime under Las Vegas Municipal Code, and we're gonna leave the gun part out. What had happened was, 20 years ago, the federal government said convicted of battery domestic violence, you'll lose your gun. People said, that's too much of a liberty interest, you're taking away. The Nevada Supreme Court said, no, it's a federal requirement, not a state requirement. But they kind of signaled, if there ever was a state requirement, we'd probably reconsider this. Well, in 2015, the legislature made it a state requirement that you lose your gun, and the Supreme Court did pretty much whatever we thought they would do, which was say, that's too much of a liberty interest that you're taking away, you now need a jury trial. If we adopt a local law and drop the gun thing, I think we're right back in the position we are today, which is no jury trial. So to let you know, we're gonna legislate around it.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Jerwick. Okay, we are on to Agenda Item 58, Discussion for Possible Action Regarding Requests to File Anamicus Brief, the 70 Acres LLC versus Binion Case Number 75481 in the Nevada Supreme Court. This is in reference to all wards. Mr. Jerwick.
Thank you. The, as you recall, in the litigation, the various pieces of litigation that have been flying around in this Badlands litigation, one piece has involved whether or not the applicant needed to fire, file a major modification along with the rest of his application for the 435 apartments that were granted by this council and three applications that were stricken by this council because they didn't have a major modification with them. We opposed that in court, and we lost Judge Crockett's rule that you did need a major modification. The reason we opposed it is because in the 30-year history of Queens Ridge and the McCully Ranch Conceptural Master Plan, we had never required a major modification for almost anything. But the judge disagreed, and then another judge, Judge Williams, also said the same thing. And I know that in a federal case, in an unrelated argument, Judge Mahan said that he did not think that the applicant had a right to develop anything. So having said all of that, we did, this council decided not to appeal Judge Crockett's decision when it came down over a year ago. We have, at least in my opinion right now, an opportunity to negotiate. They have not come to the table, the applicant has, or I should say, Johan and his team have not come to the table, but I think this may open the door to the possibility that they will. That's the only reason you should vote for this, is to open that door a crack and see where we go. So what I'm recommending is that you authorize me, at my discretion, to file an amicus brief. If there's no negotiations, we will not file that brief, and I would add one more thing to it. I will set a 5:00 deadline of tomorrow for them to pick up the phone and call and decide if they want to negotiate. If they don't, here, if I don't hear from them at 5:00 tomorrow, we will not file the amicus brief. That's my recommendation.
Okay, so comments, please, Councilwoman Seaman?
Well, I move to authorize the city attorney in his discretion to submit an amicus brief in the Nevada Supreme Court Case Number 75481. If negotiations between the developer and the city do not commence, as the city attorney is asked by 5:00 tomorrow, the city attorney may decide not to submit the amicus brief.
Was that part of your reckon, the may? I thought you were saying-
Well, I'm telling you, there will be no doubt, so you know, I won't.
You will not.
If I don't hear by 5:00 tomorrow, I will not.
Okay, any comments, questions for Councilwoman? You proceed, then, there is a motion. Please vote and please post. The motion carries.
Very good. And I will inform you all tomorrow-
By 5:00?
Yeah, 5:00 I will call you, or I'll text you, or I will send you an email and let you know.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to Agenda Item 59. Discussion for Possible Action Regarding the Approval of an Appeal of a Work Card Denial for Nicholas Michael Lipinski, DB, at Live Smart Automation at 4175 Cameron Street, Suite A2, Clark County, Nevada.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council members. For the record, Mary McElhone, Deputy Planning Director. We have received a late request to have this item obeyed until November 6th. There has been a request by Attorney Jay Brown's office. He has been retained for the services, and since he's unfamiliar with the merits of this work card appeal, he's asked that this item be obeyed.
Thank you. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to approve the abeyance. How long?
The request is until November 6th, City Council.
Okay, so I move to approve the abeyance to our next council meeting on November 6th.
There's motion, please vote. Whoops. I'm doing, I'm trying, but I keep seeing a blue E. There we go. And that motion carries. Thank you, Ms. McElhone. Thank you very much for this, and we will hold this. Move on to Agenda Item 60. Recommending Committee Bills Eligible for Adoption at This Meeting, Bill Number 2019-26. Councilman Anthony, would you like the bill read?
Yes, Mayor. Bill Number 2019-26, An Ordinance Relating to Nightclubs and Establishments with a Tavern Limited Alcoholic Beverage License, Amending Provisions of LVMC Chapter 6.39 to exempt from licensing and regulation as a nightclub any establishment with a tavern limited license within the Downtown Entertainment Overlay District, Amending LVMC Section 6.50.250 to authorize conditions to be imposed on such establishments regarding outdoor patron lines and outdoor speakers and providing for other related matters. In addition, Your Honor, the City Attorney's Office has distributed a proposed First Amendment 9-9-19 version to everyone, and I believe Mr. Jerwick's here to provide the highlights.
Thank you very much. Would you care to make a motion?
Well, we have to make a motion to the couple, a couple of housekeeping items.
Oh, thank you.
One, I need to give you a brief history of it, and then I need to explain the First Amendment. And then because the public hearing was not finished at recommending, we need to reopen the public hearing at this meeting, I think the Metropolitan Police Department will probably want to make a couple of comments.
So will we do that first?
Pardon? Actually, if I could read the amendments and then I think, take, then open the public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
So if I could, the, this bill originated, and I'm the sponsor of it, because I have regular meetings with the Fremont East Entertainment District. And when they first were formed, they got tavern limited licenses, and they were very much encouraged to go out and have various forms of entertainment. They don't get gaming with it, but they have no distance separation, and it's a less expensive license. In 2015, there was an adoption of a nightclub ordinance, and it included them. And when they found out about it, they contacted me, and they said, we thought that we weren't gonna be in this, we thought that we were not gonna be, have the requirements of a nightclub. And when I read it, there were things in the nightclub ordinance that would be good for the town, good for our safety, good for the police department, and there were some things in it that shouldn't apply to them. An example was, in the nightclub ordinance that was adopted in 2015, you couldn't have sound that you could hear outside your property line. Well, if you have a parking lot in a building in the middle, your property line's way over here, your door is here, and you can enforce that. But everybody on Fremont East, their property line is their door, and you're always gonna hear noise at their door. So little things like that didn't make any sense. But other things did make sense. The nightclub ordinance required that you can only have lines that are two abreast on the street, so you don't clog the sidewalk. The nightclub ordinance had stuff in it that said that you had to have a security plan, and those are very good ideas. So what we did was we exempted them in this ordinance from the nightclub ordinance, but we took the good things out of the nightclub ordinance and enhanced them and put them in the tavern limited. So I don't believe we're gonna lose any security or protection. In fact, I think it's gonna be a bit enhanced. So what I want to do is just read into the record the amendments that occurred since the original bill was introduced. The original bill, all it really did was take the line control, as I mentioned, the two abreast, and move it to tavern limited. And what it did is it said you have to comply with these speaker requirements. Some people on the street have speakers aimed at the street. It's impossible, if you're a law enforcement officer, to hear your own radio when they're blaring them. And so the nightclub ordinance made you turn the speakers inward. Both of those things stay in this bill. In addition, let me read a couple of changes that have occurred. The provisions that require a mandatory security plan addressing all aspects of the operation and to require compliance with the same rules as nightclubs regarding the presence of minors in security plan enforcement, that's been added. There's been an addition that establishments whose entertainment hasn't been mandated by a condition of City Council approval, their entertainment must be approved in advance by the director. So remember, when you approved tavern limited licenses, you wanted them to have some kind of entertainment, comedy club, jazz band, blah, blah, blah. Nightclub is one of those things in there. Now we have to approve it at the director level to make sure, unless the council's already approved it. The, let me continue. It exempts from the requirements of a special use permit for a tavern limited. Right now, a tavern limited requires a use permit that goes with it. Any nightclub requires a use permit, that would take them out of that requirement of a use permit. And by the way, that's probably a good thing, because you, if, under the old rule, you revoked a nightclub license, and you did before, the SUP stays in effect. So now you don't have an SUP or any land right that goes with it, and I think that's a good thing. The director can impose, in condition with the security plan, conditions similar to those required by the Gaming Control Board for clubs having a gaming component. There's a provision to order the holder of the tavern limited license from operating as a nightclub or having a nightclub component of a tavern limited establishment if that person has had a nightclub license revoked or denied. So that means, by adopting this, the person who's nightclub license you took away before isn't suddenly back in the game with a nightclub. If they had it revoked, it stays revoked, they don't get to have it again. And then finally, we adjust the language about the scope of security-related searches and the vetting of independent hosts, as those adjustments were required by the licensing division. So we have worked with Metro, I know they were eventually against this, and so we sat down and we worked through what I think were a very, very good and better bill as a result of that conversation. I don't believe they have any objection anymore. With that, I'll answer any questions, and I'll ask you to open the public hearing.
I met with the sheriff yesterday, and I think he is absolutely in agreement. Do we have representation? Please come up and introduce yourselves. Don't hear it from me, it's hearsay.
Yeah, can you also open the public hearing, Mayor? Will you also open the public hearing?
Please. I will move to open the public hearing on this, and first, please, gentlemen.
For the record, Brian O'Callahan with Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department, and you're correct, working with city attorney slash developer Brad Jerwick, and also Mary McElhone from Business Licensing. We've worked out an agreement, and it's gonna work for us.
And so you are encouraging our support.
We're on board with it.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, any comments? Is this retroactive? Did you say that?
No, it, it's become effective upon your signature publication this weekend, so it's not retroactive. What it does is, if you had a nightclub license, you don't really lose that license, we're not taking it away with us, but it's unnecessary. And so, but you will have to comply with everything in the new ordinance. So if you had a nightclub license, you didn't have a security plan, you didn't have all the requirements that we have with the new one, you're gonna have to comply with this.
Okay, thank you. And the cost, additional costs to the business on this one?
Correct, there's no cost to the business. Whatever they're paying for the tavern limited, it's included.
Thank you very much. Okay, public hearing, anyone interested, please come forward and make your comments. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Officers, thank you. Okay, I'll close public hearing, and back to you.
I will move for approval with First Amendment.
Thank you. There's a motion to approve, please vote and please post. And that motion carries unanimously.
I just want to make a comment before I leave. I want to thank Mary McElhone so much. I know she's retiring next year, and she is an absolute asset to the city.
She didn't tell us that, we don't accept that, knock that off. No, no.
She is incredible. I just want to say, this would not be here right now without she.
That we agree with. No.
Thank you.
Okay, Agenda Item 61. I mean, my gosh, we've just gotten a groove here. You can't leave this council. Recommending Committee Bills Eligible for Adoption Later Meeting, Bills, Items Number 61, 62, Bills Number 2019-28, 2019-29 will be heard later meeting. We'll move on to new bills. Okay, new bills. Items 63 through 65, Bills Number 2019-30 through 2019-32 will be heard, Recommending Committee Meeting Monday, September 30, 2019. City Attorney, please read our new bills.
Yes, Mayor. Bill Number 2019-30, An Ordinance to amend a Town Center Development Standards Manual to allow the use auto sales showroom in specified land use districts either as a conditional use or by means of a special use permit, to allow the use of valet parking in specified land use districts as a conditional use and to provide further related matters. Bill Number 2019-31, An Ordinance to amend various provisions of the Unified Development Code, LVMC Title 19, to provide clarification and standardization relating to distance separation standards and measurements, clarify when access-related standards refer to vehicular access or pedestrian access or both, establish additional standards regarding the interpretation of terms, and provide further related matters. Bill Number 2019-32, An Ordinance to amend LVMC Section 11.68.105 pertaining to expressive activity within the pedestrian mall, to clarify that the use of amplified sound is permitted in connection with such activity, subject to the same maximum noise levels that apply to street performers, and provide further related matters.
Thank you very much. New Bills Number 2019-30 through 2019-32 are assigned to the September 30, 2019 Recommending Committee Members, Councilman Anthony Knutson and Councilwoman Fiore. If any so designated, are unable to attend, the clerk's office will coordinate. Finding substitutes is necessary at my direction, please. Thank you. This morning's session of the City Council is going into recess till it is quarter of 12, till 12:15.